We call the order of the meeting of the Board of Trustees Tuesday, March 27, 2018. Madam Secretary, please call the roll.
Virginia Baxter.
Here.
Jeff Kellogg.
Here.
Vivian Malauulu.
Here.
Doug Otto.
Sunny Zia.
Thank you. First item, 1.3, Public Comments on Closed Session Items. A total of three minutes will be allocated for each speaker with maximum. We only have two speakers. The first one is Neil Galey and the second one is Clara Er. Welcome.
Trustees, thank you for allowing me a few minutes to address Closed Session Agenda Item 1.7, The Performance Evaluation of Superintendent President Reagan Romali. My name is Neil Galey, although in the school records I'm known as William. I have been a full-time faculty member at Long Beach City College, teaching at the Pacific Coast Campus since 2001. Last fall, I was at a small meet and greet with our new President Romali. As part of the socializing, she asked those in attendance to tell her about improvements that needed to happen. I saw my chance and mentioned a landscaping area at PCC that had been neglected for at least six years in spite of my annually raising the issue. Her response was to follow me to PCC that afternoon, take a walk with me around the site, go make contacts and get back to me with the anticipated start date of the project. And the project started exactly as she said it would. I realized that the project was under planning long before she was hired, but her willingness to listen and to go and to see and to investigate and to respond sent the clear message that she cares about Long Beach City College. Let me give you two more examples of how she has demonstrated her caring. President Romali is the first superintendent president that I know of to have an office at PCC, and even though her busy schedule does not permit her to be there very much, just having her name on a door that our students walk past every day lets us all know that she cares about the Pacific Coast Campus. President Romali is the first superintendent president that I know of to come to the off-campus union office and meet with union leaders, and even though there are some things upon which we will always differ, her willingness to engage told us that she cares about the LBCC Faculty Association. And finally, on a more personal note, President Romali is the first superintendent president to personally call my office, and she even left a voicemail message. And President Romali is the first superintendent president in 17 years to know my name. Board members, a sincere thanks for your time. President Romali, sincere thanks for caring.
Thank you, Neil. Clara Er.
Good afternoon and thank you for having me here today. My name is Clara Yuri. I am the student representative on the Mental Health Work Group, which falls under Dr. Romali's Slot Team 12. Team 12 was created to address issues concerning social and emotional support for LBCC students. The various workgroups included in Team 12 are a marketing and communications team focused on breaking stigmas and spreading the word about various efforts and programs, a food and securities team dedicated to meeting physical needs, a homelessness team dedicated to ensuring students have basic necessities, the mental health team, and a professional development team dedicated to training and equipping staff and faculty to handle various aspects of student needs and behavior. In the short time that Slot 12 has been meeting, we've been able to secure a $250,000 scholarship, sorry, grant from the California Community College's chancellor's office to be allocated to initiatives specifically pertaining to mental health. Some of the immediate goals that the mental health team has set include hiring a new full-time clinician, increasing the number of workshops available to students throughout the semester, investing in kiosks that can provide quick and easy screening services to students, and launching an active minds chapter. We are also seriously dedicated to breaking the stigma around mental health so that students can feel safe enough to ask and seek the help that they need. On a larger scale, Slot 12 envisions a student help center that will serve as a one-stop-shop for students to have their social, emotional, and physical needs met, and we want this building to include a food pantry, resources to help recovering addicts and homeless students, and quick and easy access to mental health clinicians. I want to thank Dr. Romali for recognizing LBCC's shortcomings in providing adequate social and emotional support to students and for creating Slot 12 in response. And thank you, Board.
Thank you, Clara. No other speakers at this time. We're going to, we have the following items in Closed Session, 1.4. This is the Conference with Real Estate Negotiations Pursuant to Government Code, Section 549-56.8, property 3220 and 3340 Los Coyotes Diagonal and 3325 Palo Verde Avenue, Long Beach, California, 90808, also known as Los Coyotes Site, Agent Negotiation Representatives of Atkinson, Anderson, Loi, Rudd, et cetera, their legal counsel. Next item will be Item 1.5. This is the LBCC FA Negotiating Item Pursuant to Government Code, Section 3549.1 and 549-57.6. District Chief Negotiator will be Rose Delgadoio. 1.6 Personnel Pursuant to Government Code, Section 549-54.5, 549-57. Be one public employee discipline dismissal release. And the final one will be 1.7 Personnel Pursuant to Government Code, Section 549-57. Public Employee Employment Performance Evaluation Superintendent President Midyear Evaluation. Those are the items. This time, we'll adjourn to Closed Session. And reconvene the meeting of the Board of Trustees for Tuesday, March 27, 2018. If everyone could please stand, and I'm not, I'm going to ask. Student trustee, lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance, please.
Everybody place your right hand over your heart. Ready, begin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Thank you. Madam Secretary, roll call, please.
Virginia Baxter.
Here.
Jeff Kellogg.
Here.
Vivian Malauulu.
Here.
Doug Otto.
Here.
Sunny Zia.
Here.
And Student Trustee Chavez.
President.
2.4 Report on Closed Session Item. The Board met with its legal counsel in Closed Session Pursuant to Government Code, Section 549-56.8. Direction was provided to the district's legal counsel. And that is the only item we're reporting out on Closed Session. Next item, 2.5. This is the approval of the minutes for February 27, 2018, regular board meeting. Is there any corrections on this? If not, I'll entertain a motion to approve.
Some of.
Motion by trustee Zia, second by trustee Baxter, to approve the minutes of February 27, 2018. If there's no.
And the board retreat, March 13 is there.
And March 13, 2018, board retreat. Thank you. Special meeting. No question, comments. Madam Secretary, please call the roll on Item 2.5.
Virginia Baxter.
Aye.
Jeff Kellogg.
Aye.
Vivian Malauulu.
Aye.
Doug Otto.
Aye.
Zia.
Aye.
And Student Trustee Chavez.
Aye.
Advisory vote.
Thank you. 2.6 Introduction to Special Announcements. Superintendent President Romali?
Yes, sir. I'd like to congratulate Richard Veramontes if he is here tonight on his retirement. Richard has been a custodian here for 32 years, and we want to thank him so much. Richard, is Richard here? No, he couldn't make it? Okay. We'd also like to congratulate David Whiteman, who has been a custodian here for 14 years, and congratulate him and thank him as he retires. Is David here? Okay. Thank you so much. I also want to introduce someone that you're going to be approving on tonight's agenda. He is Dr. Michael Munoz. He comes to us from Rio Hondo College, and he is for your approval tonight as the new vice president for Student Services. And I would like him to just take a couple of minutes to come to the podium and say hello.
Thank you, Dr. Romali. Good evening, members of the Board of Trustees. My name is Mike Munoz. I'm very excited to be here tonight. Just a little brief background on myself. Currently, I serve as the Executive Dean of Counseling and Student Equity at Rio Hondo College. It's just about a 12-mile straight shot up the 605 North. I'm in that capacity at Rio Hondo College. I oversee counseling, transfer center, career center, assessment center, first-year success center, high school outreach, multiple college access programs, as well as I lead Rio Hondo College's integrated planning process and oversee many of the Student Services technology platforms. I'm really excited to be here tonight. This is exciting for me. I've been a distant admirer of Long Beach City College for many years. It's known for being a center of excellence and the work that you've done around multiple measures and the college promise. So I'm just, it's a great privilege to be here, and I'm excited to work with all of you and work with the amazing faculty, staff, and students here at LBCC. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Munoz. For those of you as well, he is also one of the guided pathways colleges, so he comes to us with experience there that we're looking forward to taking advantage. Welcome aboard.
Anything else? All right. Then we're moving on to 2.8 ASB President Report.
Excuse me, Mr. President. Any reordering of the agenda? Vice President?
Thank you. Before I turn it back over.
I don't believe so, but I will ask officially. Is there reordering any items on this agenda, members? I checked before. There is none?
No.
Welcome.
Thank you, President Kellogg. Quite a few things on my announcement today. First off, just to let you guys know, ASB elected and appointed positions have been off for a few weeks now. Deadline for them. Elected positions due Friday, March 30th. This Friday next. Last week, we had our first annual club mixer. It's really good to actually see like the clubs interacting outside of just like the normal Senate meetings, especially because we have over 60 active clubs on campus, and just seeing them collaborate and just making connections is all the more worthy for that to happen. Next up, this past weekend, I attended March for Our Lives Long Beach. This was orchestrated by high school students from several high schools around the area, and it really goes to show the dedication Long Beach has towards the youth and supporting them in all they do. It was actually estimated that it was only going to be around 2,000 people to show up, but Long Beach turned out, and it was about 5,000 people that showed up at Bixby Park this past Saturday. These marches particularly spoke up in condemnation of gun violence in our schools and seeking legislative action to prevent these atrocities from happening again. Following that, our Rep. Student Services, Jocelyn Reyes, and I have created a smoking survey that will hopefully help gather feedback on the thoughts of our students with the current designated smoking areas and seeking if there are things that need to be revisited and/or be improved on. Anyone wishing to take the survey may visit the Fish Bowl and the E-Building to take it. And we made sure to have like a comment section. That way, like, we actually get the true feedback of our students, not so much just like statistics, but actually hearing the voices and what they have concerns with. And it was, it's an unbiased survey, so honestly, it's for people who do smoke, people who don't, and understanding both sides of like the whole conflict. And then hopefully, we'll have a detailed PowerPoint ready for the following Board of Trustees meeting in order to look deeper into the viewpoints of our students and some of the comments that were made. So far, there's about 260 surveys that have been collected. We're hoping to get right around 450 to 500, just to get like a good glimpse about like what's going down. What's going down, yeah. Next up, Student Affairs have a full month of events in honor of Sexual Assault Awareness Month for the month of April. I'll send all you guys the scheduled events through email. There's over 15 events throughout the month of April, so there's like a good chance like you're available. Hopefully, I can see a lot of you guys there. Then, following that, a few dates to look out for in the future would be Friday, March 30th, this Friday, from 4:00 to 6:00. There's going to be an Easter egg hunt at PCC, the Quad Area, with games and activities hosted by our PCC Cultural Affairs Council, and there's going to be a lot of different clubs and organizations there. So hopefully, you can stop by, hunt for some Easter eggs. Yeah, it's a lot of fun. Seriously, yeah. In addition, the Third Annual Sustainability Fair will be going down this, on Thursday, April 19, 2018. It's the third annual one. The last one, I remember, there were, if you guys wanted to try roasted crickets, different flavors. They are amazing, and, you know, yeah, a lot of fun. Then, following that, in May, it's going to be a culture walk exhibiting different cultures around Long Beach and the surrounding areas, and then, but I'll elaborate more on that in the following report. And then, just lastly, if any of you guys see any of our organizations either fundraising or hosting events on campus, support them any way you can, either by attending the events, actually buying into like some of their taco sales or like different sales that they have around campus. It's always good knowing that like the money that you give them actually goes back to causes and like events that go back to the students that they do on campus and outside of campus. Yeah. I love the clubs and organizations here and wouldn't regret like not joining one in the beginning, yeah. So thank you very much, and that's my time. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you, ASB President. So we're now going to move to Item 2.9, Public Comments on Agenda Items. A total of three minutes will be allotted to each speaker with a maximum of 20 minutes to each subject unless extended by the Board President. I'm acting in his absence as the Board Vice President. So the first, the only public comment on an agenda item that we have is Uduwak Joe Intuk on Agenda Item 3.1 Funding Formula. Do we have to wait for the timer to be?
Hey, good afternoon, Dr. Romali and Board members. Uduwak Joe Intuk, I'm a resident of North Long Beach. I came out today to speak about the new funding formula and its new focus on equity in underrepresented students. I think this is an incredibly important statewide initiative and local initiative. It's really going to force us to focus, to look at student success at all levels. I grew up in North Long Beach. I was a low-income student, second-generation immigrant family. I was able to come to Long Beach City College. It was a springboard for me. I was able to go on to earn two engineering degrees and work for three Fortune 500 companies, and it wouldn't have been possible without the classes and the labs I had here at Long Beach City College. And I look at this, and I see that we're looking at a potential funding loss of about $10 million based on that proposed new formula. And, you know, it might be, sounds scary at first, but looking at it, there's a hold harmless clause, at least for the first year, and then there's a pathway forward to gain that money back through full-time enrollment, your FTS increase, increasing or increased enrollment, having the student success rates increase for the annual awards, three-year completions, and associate degree transfers. And I think those are all things that we can change and improve, and we can meet those metrics. And we know when we give people educational opportunities, it changes their life. You know, it's the ladder up, it's upward mobility to the middle class, and where I live in North Long Beach, most of the residents are low-income. And so, community college is really a necessity for us because it's how we move up and how we achieve. You know, it's the longer it takes someone to graduate, you have increased student loans, we're finding more and more young people are delaying having families, delaying home ownership. It really has a tangible economic outcome on people's lives when they don't have access or they don't have successful rates of completion. You know, research shows just getting an AA degree is going to increase your lifetime earning capacity by about a half a million dollars. If you can get a bachelor's degree, on average, a million dollars of lifetime earning capacity increases that much more. That's a home, that's taking care of elderly family members, your kids, travel, you know, we want people to be productive and contributing members to our community. And so, I'm excited about this. I know there's still some nuts and bolts. We won't really know until the May revise, and then once the final budget's adopted in June, what the impact is going to be for Long Beach City College, but I think this is something that we can tackle and that we're already making progress on. And so, I'm excited about this proposal. I just want to speak in favor of it. Thanks so much.
We'll now move to Item 3.1, Presentations. Update on the Governor's Proposed Funding Formula for Community Colleges.
Thank you. I'd like to introduce Dean of Institutional Effectiveness Heather Van Volkenberg, who is going to make a short presentation talking about the new proposed funding formula from the angle of the Governor's Proposal, as well as the Community College League's response to that proposal, and then giving some very specifics on how that affects Long Beach City College, and then what do we need to do as a result. Dr. Betty Miller and I will be available to her to jump in and assist where necessary. We've purposely made it a strategy presentation, but we do have the numeric detail for you should you so desire it, and I'll provide some commentary at the end. Thank you.
Okay, great. Thank you. Hi, good evening. Do you see the slides in front of you? You do? Okay, thank you. So I'm just going to start a little bit with a summary. So the New California Community College Funding Formula is proposed by the Governor's Office with support from the Chancellor's Office. The Governor's intent is for it to be student-centered. The simulation by the Department of Finance has Long Beach City College losing $10.4 million. Looking at all the districts, between 38 and 49 out of the 72 will be losing funding. The reason that that number is variable is because there are different simulations that are in play. So, for example, the Department of Finance simulation is a little different than the language that is currently in the trailer bill for the Governor's Proposal. So because of these differences, there are some different pieces at play, but what we can see is that over half the districts will be losing funding. Workgroups across the state have been asked to provide input, and that includes CEO and CBO groups. And what we see in the projections is that the district will become unequalized with the highest funded at $9,147 and the lowest funded at $5,157. So here we have, I know that you have a better printout of this in front of you, but here we can see the districts that are losing. Like I said before, it's a little over half of the districts will be losing funding, and Long Beach City College is very disadvantaged in the projections so far. In addition to the Governor's Proposal, the CCLC has also made some recommendations, and so I've got them side by side so we can kind of see what some of those differences are. So the Governor's Proposal is going to have a one-year hold harmless. The CCLC is recommending two. The Governor's Proposal will implement the new formula in 1819, so the next fiscal year, whereas the CCLC is recommending implementing it titrated over five years. The Governor's Proposal is using Bog-Pell recipients as a measure of economic status of students, and I'll explain a little more about that in the next slide. The CCLC is recommending that we add additional financial aid recipients such as CalWorks. The Governor's Proposal is using the awards and completions measures in aggregate, whereas the CCLC is recommending a disaggregation based on special populations. The Governor's Proposal is saying that we should do the summer FTS allocation fixed, and that decision is made by the district as to when it would be fixed. The CCLC recommendation is that it should be fixed predicated by the final day of instruction. Both the proposal and those recommendations are fixing when we can use summer FTS, and we'll talk a little more about what that means. Just to be clear, the elements of the funding formula, there's three. So there's the FTES and base allocation, which is representing about 50% of the funding we would get, and this is the details that are in the funding formula we currently have. The new pieces are the Bog and Pell recipients, which will represent about 25% of the funding that we get, and then the student outcomes data, which would represent another 25% of the funding. And the student outcomes is broken down into three parts. That's annual awards, three-year completion, and ADTs, so associate degrees for transfer. So like I said before, if the Governor's Budget passes as it is, LBCC is projected to lose at least $10.4 million. And again, I mentioned this idea about the summer allocation, and so what we see in this chart, we see the purple bars for 2015, 16, 2017, 18. Those represent stability funding that Long Beach City College was given. And basically, what that stability funding did is allow us to persist with the same level FTES for 14, 15, and 16, 17. If you look along the top of those bars, all of them are putting us above the 20,000 FTES mark. This is critically important because the FTES mark at 20,000 is what designates the district as a large institution, a large district. If we fall below that persistently, then we become a medium-sized district. The impact on our base allocation, if that happens, is $1.2 million. Additionally, if the Governor's Budget passes as it is, we will, so this is related to hold harmless, so we'll receive the same amount in 1819 that we're getting in 1718 because we'll have that one year of hold harmless, but then we'll be losing somewhere around $10.4 million in the 1920 fiscal year. So it's only that one year of hold harmless. The districts that are benefiting from hold harmless will not be eligible for COLA, and I am going to turn to Betty to kind of expand that impact for me.
Yeah, we did a calculation based on the district's current apportionment calculation. The loss of COLA would be somewhere between $2.8 to $3 million. The CCLC is recommending, on top of.
That's ridiculous.
The recommendation from CCLC and the work group that they're working with is recommending that the quote "hold harmless" districts would receive COLA. Based on our analysis of the dollars that have been allocated for education, there are enough dollars to fund the hold harmless and to provide COLA for the districts that are not in the hold harmless category, and little remaining for other purposes. So it would require an augmentation to the system. Another factor related to COLA is that many districts in the state have COLA tied to their collective bargaining agreements, and that will have disproportionate effect across the state with the districts that are not receiving COLA versus the ones that are.
Thank you. Another aspect that will be emphasized with, if the Governor's Budget passes as it is, is the completions and awards, right? So that was 25% of our funding, or meant to make up 25% of our funding. If you look at where LBCC ranks in terms of the other districts, for annual awards, we ranked 71 out of 72. For three-year completion, we're at 65 out of 72, and for associate degrees for transfer, we're at 30 out of 72. So just to kind of help you understand sort of how unreasonable this budget is, just to give you a sense in another way, to break even, we would need to have a 50% increase in our overall awards and a 7% increase in our FTS, for example.
Heather, could I ask you? What is the definition of awards?
Yeah, no, that's a fantastic question. So annual awards are going to be all the awards that are provided in the given year that they're counting for the formula.
What are the annual awards?
Yes, so let me expand that for you. That's going to include, so according to the trailer bill language, that's going to include all chancellor's approved awards, which are all degrees, associate, as well as degrees for transfers, and certificates that contain more than 18 credits.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, excellent. And so, just to come back to this, here is a potential model for what we would need to do to break even, 50% increase in awards and 7% increase in FTES. I'm looking at national models. It's, you know, a strong national model if you're able to raise FTES by 1% to 2% within the year, and graduation rates, in other words, are awards, and 1% to 2% in the year. I'm going to jump in a little bit to scenario two. So if the CCLC recommendations are passed, so again, they propose the two-years hold harmless, as we noted, that would give us more time at the current funding rate. The implementation of the new formula titrated over five years would effectively mean that we would need to increase awards by 10% each of those years, and again, the national model is 1% to 2%, so that's quite an ask. The other two elements about disaggregating the awards by special populations and looking at additional financial aid recipients, we weren't ever given any sort of mathematical models or simulations from the CCLC in terms of how that would be incorporated, and so that creates like such a large number of variables that can kind of be manipulated that we can't really speculate clearly how that would impact us either positively or negatively, not without knowing exactly how they would put that into the formula. And again, the summer allocation, as we discussed, whether it's predicated by fixing it by on our own terms or fixing it in another way, it still becomes a difficulty for the institution. Additionally, the CCLC also recommended utilizing FTS three-year average when an institution is looking at going into stability funding. So currently, the process is we, the stability funding, they look at just the most recent year, and that's what is matched. The CCLC recommended that we could use the higher of either the most recent year or the average of three years. And so, as you can see in this diagram, what it does is for the, if we've had multiple years in that average that are high years, that's going to bring up our FTS, whereas at the same time, when we have lower number of years, it's going to at the same time, when we have lower number of years, it's going to cause those to persist for longer as well. So here are LBCC's recommendations.
I'll take that. Thank you so much, Heather. You did a fantastic job.
Thank you.
If you could stay up there, because I know there'll probably be some questions.
Okay.
I wanted to add some commentary on the end to wrap it up and make some recommendations as to where we go from here. Certainly, we applaud the intent, which is to help low-income and minority students. The funding formula is extremely well-intended, and we absolutely, it is our moral imperative to help their special populations. It is also our moral imperative to look to continue to retain and complete students. So we eagerly look forward to implementing a formula that mathematically makes sense. At the same time, it's hard to understand how a legislator could see the mathematical computations and see that so many minorities-serving districts such as Long Beach, such as Compton, such as Serritos, such as Los Angeles, such as Oakland-Peralta, stand on the losing side. So we are very much in favor of this intent. We want to make sure that it mathematically makes sense to accomplish the goals that it is intended to make. For example, it is essential with increasing costs that we have COLA. It is essential that we have a permanent hold harmless. Our populations are shrinking. The birth rate is down in Long Beach Unified. Long Beach Unified had 90,000 graduates before. They now have, or 90,000 students, they now have 74,000 students. Our pipeline is smaller, so even if we do a better job, they mathematically are not there. There are also strategies that have been used, I just came off of six years with a very heavy completion agenda, where we were very successful in implementing a variety of completion agendas, including guided pathways. When you do your job well, your enrollment decreases. So mathematically, to see us do a good job and then have a financial accidental punishment for that, I think there are some unintended consequences in this formula that mathematically don't make sense, that are highly unintentional, that we must solve for to make sure we honor the original intent of the formula. There's also no dollars in here for higher-cost programs such as CTE. The governor wants to put people to work. Career technical programs are essential to put people to work. At PCC, we have welding, advanced, advanced manufacturing, logistics, partnerships with the port, nursing. This funding model incentivizes a liberal arts education, and to be a well-rounded institution, we must also have the career technical element that simply must be considered. We also, I want to caution, there is not a single district that has been able to numerically back into these numbers, so we do not have the actual calculations as to how it will calculate. We really want to make sure we look at that so that we can lobby mathematically to make it, have it make sense for the intent, which is an excellent intent. The next page, Heather, if you could forward there. We've begun our advocacy. We've had great support. We wanted to show you what we've completed and where we are planned. We've had tremendous support from Lakewood and Long Beach. We just met with Dee Andrews yesterday, who has agreed to carry forward a suggestion to get a resolution from the Long Beach City Council to help support us, and Lakewood has offered to do the same thing. So our communities are coming out in tremendous support, and we're very grateful for that. So now, great job, Heather. We will open it up for your questions.
Questions, members of the board at this time. Chair recognizes trustee Otto, followed by trustee Zia.
Dr. Romali, can you please give us your best estimate of if the funding formula as proposed, and I realize it's not final, would be passed by the legislature and visited on the Long Beach Community College District? What that would mean in terms of our course offerings, in terms of our programs, in terms of our faculty?
Yes. If it were to pass in its current state, it means a $10.4 million cut to this institution. That forces us to look at a variety of decisions. When you're looking at $10 million, it's approximately 9% of the budget. Virtually everything will be looked at. However, at the same time, we want to be approaching the next year of our lives with a positive approach, which is we must drive up our enrollment, we must equip our marketing team to be able to not only bring in more students, we must equip our classified and faculty to retain those students and convert more students. At the same time, we must immediately make sure that we are closing tightly around the completion agenda. So at the same time that we are being jeopardized and might have to make some very difficult decisions about the way the organization looks, I'm never one to give up without a hell of a fight, so we're going to be pushing completions and enrollment on the opposite end, if that answers your question.
But it could mean the elimination of programs, it could mean the elimination of, you know, laying off of faculty members and things like that if this happened, although we obviously never want that to happen.
Yes, 9% puts us into some very serious decisions.
Thanks. Chair recognizes trustee Zia.
Thank you, President Kellogg. So just a question on the advocacy portion. What do we mean, do we have, as far as completed? These are folks that are supporters of what we're proposing, or can you speak a little bit about that?
Sure.
Please, thank you.
These are the folks that we have talked to so far and explained the situation and how it will impact Long Beach City College. For example, for the Lakewood City Council, we've also told them, since they also represent Compton and Serritos, we've also told them that all three of their districts stand to lose in the funding formula. We've contacted members of the state budget committee and those folks like Jose Medina, who's a power player in the education arena. His district Riverside is on the losing side of the funding formula. So we've tried to reach all of the influencers in the budget committee and on the education committees through Dale Shimisaki's suggestion that might be able to influence this. We do, on the list on the right, these are folks that we have planned appointments with in the future, whether in person or over the phone, to try and advocate for us. That being said, the second that Lakewood and Long Beach were to pass a resolution, that gives us some more leverage to have a wider audience as well.
I'm still a little fuzzy about, are these folks going to support as far as influence? Is it safe to assume that they're going to be advocating, or who's the audience that...
I apologize for not answering that. They have not indicated to us whether they would specifically vote for or against. However, I can tell you that we've met with a lot of positivity. They didn't know that we were going to be so dramatically impacted. They, each of the, many of them asked for us to send them more details, and if we had a backup position, what could that be? So a lot of them, particularly Assemblymember O'Donnell's office has asked us for more details, to give them as many details as we can as to what could work for us, what could not, as they develop what their positions would be. We have not had anyone say they would vote against it, but we have also not had anyone say they would vote for it. They're looking at it, it's the first they had heard of it. They had not heard from other folks, so they, a lot of them wanted more detail to think it through, but they were all very shocked that this would happen.
And in Long Beach City Council, what's that proposition as far as council voting for a resolution?
Yesterday, Councilmember Dee Andrews asked us to please bring forward a resolution with the details on it, and we're in the process of constructing that so that they could consider it, and he said he would bring it forward for their consideration. We're at the beginning stages today of constructing what that would look like in terms of what we want their ask to be.
Okay, all right. Well, I'm assuming we'll hear as the board and perhaps can go and support that resolution at council.
We would love that. We would love that. We're very happy. We did send off just an introductory letter to Mayor Garcia this morning, just letting him know the overall impact, and we just found this out, we got this offer about 5:00 yesterday afternoon, so we were very excited by this offer. So we're going to be putting together details and make sure that you know about that so that we can show up in force if need be.
Okay, great. Thank you.
So a couple comments, questions on this. Thank you for, this proposal is in a budget. So our legislators, they're not dealing with the traditional process of taking a bill, present it, formulate it. It's not that process. It's the governor, for whatever reason, good intentions or not, put this in his budget and dropped it on the entire California Community College system. I don't believe there is any college in the state of California that is in favor of this as we are sitting here right now, including us. The devastation on, regardless of the good intent, and it is a, it's a formula that, as we all know, is progressing through, but the concern is if it does go into place as it is right now, we are, like everyone else, 10 million, 8 million, every college is going to take that type of hit, plus the fact we have some add-on costs as well, if you will. This is a bad formula for this college and the entire state of California. What they're trying to achieve is not really achievable at this point in time. To ask us to do it in this short of a window is, well, it is an entire shift on how every college, including this college, would be able to address the issues. It's a little unfair when we look at certain areas where we're not as good, but in other areas, we're extremely good. So we're trying to now balance this, and so the question that came up about, cities have their own fights with the state budget. They're worried about their own funding. I think we have to stay focused on, it's great that other organizations, government agencies, want to join us, but this is a fight with the California Community College system. They have said about giving, we've talked about having a longer period of time, not one year, because it's just not practical. So for whatever reason, the entire system is really pushing hard against this funding formula, and we can only hope that we can get some changes to it. The intent is to have completions. All of those areas, those are worthy, and we all, I think, agree with that. But the way it is structured right now is devastating on this college and every college in this state. I don't think there's really, we had a graph that was a great one...
Yeah.
...that it shows, and even the colleges that are at the top of that list, that supposedly are going to benefit, aren't benefiting. They really, it's, so, you know, a little bit of the governor's last budget, maybe a little bit of a legacy, I don't know, but we really have to step up and to make sure that this formula that they have right now does not become what we have to fund ourselves on. The 50%, that is, that's the standard. It's those 25% that they have talked about doing for low-income students, et cetera, et cetera. But as it is right now, we've had this conversation, this is almost a self-inflicted recession if the colleges put this in place. I have not heard anyone advocate the other side to this yet. Even the governor has been, well, this is what we want to do, good intentions, and the one thing that's somewhat fallen away is the infamous 115th Community College, the online one, which, that's going to go away. I mean, once he leaves office, that goes with him. That's not going to happen. But this one I'm concerned about. Thank you for that reality gut check, because it's harsh. And again, our concern is it's not a legislative process. We can't work with our legislators, so when they say they're voting against it, they're going to be voting against a budget.
They have a trailer bill that has the language in it, but you are 100% right. It's absolutely devastating. It's hard to understand how anyone could vote for this.
Yeah. So here we are once again with all these other factors. So however it got put together and advanced with all the intent, that hopefully we'll just stay very focused on it, and the changes will happen, I'm concerned again, if they do pass it, how we'll be able to react, and I don't think there's a community college in California that can react quick enough to address this issue and all the things they have. So, I mean, very well done. I just looked at, I was watching going, God, and every community college is doing the same thing. We're all just, we're scared to death of what this will have on our funding, and that's not even including what funding we're going to get anyway. So, anyway. So thank you for that report.
Mr. Kellogg, I'll add a little something...
Chair recognizes trustee Malauulu.
I'll add a little something to that. You're absolutely right. It also does not follow national models. There are national benchmark institutions that are some of the best in the nation that raise their iPads 1% to 2% a year. These are the best in the nation. So how we could be expected to turn it around 50% is not realistic. It's not looking at national data and national research that models the best in the nation. So if the intent is to increase completion, you would want to model institutions that have done it well, and it mathematically does not compute.
And I'll just, and I'm going to recognize trustee Malauulu, but this is where I always have great pride in the community college system in general and community colleges for, we're a bureaucracy in many ways, but we navigate so quickly on things like this. But this is one that can really trip us up in so many ways, and at the end of the day, the students, the intent of helping students is not going to happen, because if we lose $10 million, it really limits us. So, and once again, I have great respect on how we are able to work through this, but this is one of those that I just don't get it. I get what you want to do, but the people that have to make it reality, we're all sitting there shaking our heads. So, anyway, chair recognizes trustee Malauulu. Any more positive spin you want on this one?
Thank you. Yes, actually, thank you for a very thorough report in such a short amount of time, and I appreciate everybody who's had a hand in explaining this really difficult concept to us, myself included. I had a special meeting with President Romali just because I wanted to make sure I understood it. I've had a lot of people call to ask me, what is this funding formula? And I didn't feel competent enough to respond without having a sit-down, and Dr. Romali did a really good job of explaining it to me. The one thing that I would like to just capitalize on right now is on page seven is the advocacy work that you are doing. I've never seen a more proactive approach to something coming from Sacramento as I see in what we've done here with this funding formula, and I was pleasantly surprised when I met with Dr. Romali, I think it was two weeks ago when we met, to get a rundown of all of the contacts that she's reached out to. Not only that, but even from our own college community, our own faculty, our own staff, people downtown, City Hall, with the county. So we have so much support, and I think that the advocacy is shaking enough, you know, causing enough of a stir where people are almost pulling back, and they're not shoving this down our throats, and they're actually listening, and hopefully, you know, taking heed to the concerns that we have and how much of a failure this is bound to be. I've seen things coming down from Sacramento at all levels of education where people take a very passive approach to them, and whatever comes, comes, and we'll deal with it when it gets here. But I've never seen such advocacy take place with people really standing up against it, offering solutions, offering opportunities to make it better. So as a college community, I think we should all be very proud that we are not just accepting this funding formula and, come what may, we'll deal with it then. We are actually being very proactive. And page seven, you know, the advocacy, that's a very limited list, by the way. I know that we've actually reached out to more people and made more contacts, so bravo, keep it up, and hopefully other community colleges are following suit. Hopefully, other people are, you know, engaging in the same type of advocacy and making sure that they don't just, you know, we will not go quietly into the night with this, we are going to fight this. So thank you, I appreciate that.
Other members at this time? This is just informational. Chair recognizes trustee Otto.
Just one more comment to bring home the idea of how precarious this is for Long Beach City College and why it's important that we stay on top of this, and that is that our salary benefit figure is about 90%. It hovers right at 90%, which is extremely high, which means that we have to fund everything else at the college with approximately 10% of the money, and that's not very much money, so that leaves us very few options and things to do except to eliminate programs or to eliminate people, and so we have to be very cognizant of that. The path that this will follow now is that everybody's working hard from their own perspectives to try and derail this or to support it, depending on what your position is. Some of the big districts which are going to be hurt, like Los Angeles, are working very, very hard right now, but there will come the May revise, which is the governor's revised budget about the third week of May. We'll see what that shows, and then it has to be passed by the legislature as a budget in June, kind of by the end of June. So there's a very short timeframe here, and that's why we all feel mobilized to see what it is that can be done about this. I know I've been to Sacramento twice on this subject already, and I think that it's very important for us all to be informed and stay engaged.
Other comments, questions at this time? Hearing none? Thank you, I think.
Yeah, thank you.
All right, then we're moving on. That was an informational item only. 4.1, CCT 2018...
4.1, CCT 2018 Board of Directors Election. This is an action item that the board, and I'll, I'll, let me put out there before I ask for a motion. This is where the Board of Trustees, upon recommendation of the board chair, selects five names from the candidates listed and returned to the ballot, bear mark, no later than April 25th, to the CCT Board of Directors. I did ask for any input from my colleagues. Of course, I have the benefit of the past president, trustee Otto of this organization as well. We have in the past, with the names that were submitted, there are three, three incumbents that we historically have supported, and there's no reason not to support them. So, the list, I will say, and I'm going to ask for a motion on this, is Ann Ransford. She is a, she's actually the current president of CCLC. You have, this is the incumbents, by the way, Brent Hasty from Yuba, Northern, Don Edgar from Sonoma, Santa Rosa, and then the other two, Greg Penza, he's from Allen Hancock, which is a central Santa Maria. And the final one is Greg Bonner, and I don't know him, so, Bonner.
Nice Italian.
Yeah, Bonner, okay, thank you. Bonnerosi from Aloney, which is up towards the Bay Area. Those are the five. So, at this time, can I at least entertain a motion in a second to support, and we'll have any questions? Chair recognizes our motion by trustee Otto, second by trustee Malauulu. Questions, comments on the slate of five that we're going to submit? Chair recognizes trustee Otto.
So, I, I provided some input on this. As Jeff indicated, I am the immediate past president of both the Community College Trustee Association and the Community College League of California. And as a result, I've been spending a lot of time in Sacramento, a lot of time working with various trustees, various superintendent presidents and chancellors, and I know almost all of these people. The recommendations that the president has made coincide with what my recommendations are. Ann Ransford is from Glendale. She has been doing a very good job in what's almost the end of her year as president of the Community College Trustees Association. Brent Hasty has been on the board at Yuba for 10 years. He's been the president a number of times. He sits on the water board. He's been the head of the Greater Sacramento Area Govern, Government Association on a couple of occasions. Don Edgar is from Sonoma and has been on the board, the Triple CT Board, for three years, and is very involved with, with activities at, at the Triple CT and is about to assume a leadership role. I, I, I think each of them is more than qualified to be recommended for another term. The reason that we picked Greg Penza, or at least I recommended Greg Penza, who's from Allen Hancock College, and what we try and do is to get a diversity of big and small colleges, geographic areas of the state, men and women, just try and get the diversity that community colleges are so involved with, with trying to, to utilize, is that he has been on the board at, at Allen Hancock College in Santa Maria for eight years, and prior to that, he was on the Solvank Union High School District for a number of years. He's a graduate of the Excellence in Trusteeship Program. He was the president, he's, he's the president-elect of the Sandy Nez Valley Rotary Club, was voted Man of the Year by the Valley Foundation in 2013, and was the Education Volunteer of the Year way back in 2004, which means he's been involved with education issues in California and in that area of California for 15 years at this point. Greg Bonas, so, help me out here, Jenny.
Bonacorsi.
Bonacorsi. Has been on the board for the, at the Aloney Community College District. That's kind of off the 580 up by Peralta and, and just east of the Oakland area. He has, is an elected director of the California Teachers Association on their Board of Directors. He's been on the California Teachers Association Governance Documents Committee and the CTA Policy and Organization, Organizational Department Committee. He has, he was, he was, he is the elected past director of the National Education Association Board of Directors, and so, he's got a thorough background in education at, in various ways. And in, it was way back in 1995, he was voted Who's Who among America's teachers. He is a, a schoolteacher by profession and very involved in union activities. And those are the two that we, we recommended. Suzanne Woods, who seems like a, a very competent person, has only been on the Pallaverti Board for three years and hasn't been involved in any statewide activities, and we're looking for people with some experience and, and who we think, we, we think she's got a future, but she's just not, not there yet. So, that was the, the reason we made the recommendations that we made.
Thank you. Other members of the board at this time?
I, I just wanted to ask.
Chair recognizes trustee Zia.
I don't know any of these folks, but, and I will rely on your recommendations. However, I do think we, I mean, it's mainly male-dominated board, it seems. I understand the argument about having more seasoned folks, but perhaps we could give an opportunity for Suzanne Woods to have, have access and also be able to learn from the more seasoned folks and be able to serve on this board and make it more balanced, if that's the intent, instead of just four guys and one incumbent female. Just an observation.
And let me just, it's a good observation, but the, the board, which is, Doug, how many numbers on the entire board? It is balanced. It's a 17, 18, 19, I'm close.
21.
21. It is right now, it's almost, I want to say, it's actually more women than men on the board as we, as we exist right now. If I remember correctly when I looked at it, because we do look at all the different factors. You want a balanced board. You want a representative board. So, that did come into consideration, but when we looked at these, and actually, this is a small number. Usually, you have a lot more open seats, and here it's only two, so it came down to those two people. Actually, the one person, Greg Penza, was the top voter that didn't get on the board last time, so he made sense. And then the other individual just simply cut the location. So, point well taken, but that's where the recommendations came, and, and we'll move forward with that, unless there's any other comments at this time. None? Student trustee, you'll be voting on this as well? Madam Secretary, please call the roll on this item.
Virginia Baxter.
Aye.
Jeff Kellogg.
Aye.
Vivian Malauulu.
Aye.
Doug Otto.
Aye.
Sunny Zia.
Aye.
And student trustee Chavez.
Aye.
And Eric Carriess, thank you very much. We're now to the consent calendar. Was there any items to pull from the consent calendar? If not, I'll entertain a motion to approve the consent calendar in its entirety. Motion by trustee Malauulu, second by trustee Zia.
Second.
I'm sorry. Motion by trustee Malauulu, second by trustee Zia.
Oh, sorry.
On record. And my apologies, but I always worry, and I'm going to do like I did last month, I'm going to abstain from this, just to make sure there's, I don't believe there's any, but I just want to make sure I don't ever get tripped up, that there's a contractor I'm unaware of.
President Kellogg, may I ask a question?
Yes, you may.
Thank you. And this directed to Betty Miller. In reading the pages again, do, do things stay on the purchase order list continually until the money is spent, or, you know, I'm reading this, I'm, I appear to be reading the same things, and so, I went back to last month, and I was reading the same thing, so I haven't lost my mind. So, what, what is the procedure on that? Yes, I meant the 139 pages.
Forty-nine.
Forty-nine pages.
The items will stay on the list as long as, until the end of the fiscal year.
Okay.
And the activity that is in the current period, you'll see on the far right-hand column.
Okay.
And that'll give you your recent activity.
Okay.
So, you will, this will get bigger and bigger.
Thank you.
Other questions, comments?
I just wanted to.
Chair recognizes trustee Zia.
Thank you, President Kellogg. I just want to commend staff again. I think it's fantastic that we now see purchase order and expenditures in its entirety and totality of expenditures today. It's definitely eye-opening and gives the full picture and opens up more transparency, so I really appreciate it. I have no qualms about this purchase order doc, document getting bigger and bigger. I would much rather have that than little to no information, so thank you.
Thank you. Other members at this time? The consent calendar item, by the way, we, the motion for the student trustee, the student trustee will be voting on everything with the exception of 5.18 and 5.19. Correct, Madam Secretary?
Correct.
All right, no other discussions at this time? Madam Secretary, please call the roll on the consent calendar.
Virginia Baxter.
Aye.
Jeff Kellogg.
Abstain.
Vivian Malauulu.
Aye.
Doug Otto.
Aye.
Sunny Zia.
Aye.
And student trustee Chavez, with the exception of those two personnel items.
Aye.
Thank you. We're now to item 5.19, classified personnel. This is an action item.
No, 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 no. That's included in the consent.
That's included. We're now to HR. 6.1, we're to all the contracts. All right. Item 6.1, employment contracts, starting with Kathleen Scott.
May, may I ask a question before we go?
Before we do, can I make, can I just, let me get the motion out, and then we'll do it. So, this is item 6.1, student trustee, you will be voting.
Will not.
Will not be voting on this item, that's why the circle. So, the motion on 6.1, employment contract, Kathleen J. Scott, Vice President, Academic Affairs, could I have a motion in a second, please?
So moved.
Motion by trustee Zia, second by trustee Baxter. Motion's on the floor. Chair recognizes trustee Baxter.
Yes, and this does not have to do with Dr. Scott. This was a general question, that's why I wanted to ask it before the, the vote. Who, what is the process for evaluation of upper management? Because these, these people are in upper management. Who, who are the people who evaluate them, and what is the process? Thank you, Rose.
It would be their direct supervisor. So, for example, if you are a vice president, your direct supervisor is a president, but we have a management procedure manual whereby it establishes that they are evaluated once a year.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
All right, and then, and by Brown Act, I will be reading this. There's a motion and a second on the floor. This is the employment contract, provides for a term of employment from July 1st, 2018 through June 30th, 2020. Contract provides for annual compensation of $199,722, along with health and welfare benefits and life insurance. That is the motion, and the second on the floor. There's no other questions from the members of the board. Madam Secretary, please call the roll on item 6.1.
Virginia Baxter.
Aye.
Jeff Kellogg.
Aye.
Vivian Malauulu.
Aye.
Doug Otto.
Aye.
And Sunny Zia.
Aye.
Motion carries. Congratulations, Kathleen.
Thank you very much.
Next item, 6.2. That's why you're staying around. Employment contract, Mike Munza, Vice President, Student Support Services. I'm going to read into it, and then I'll ask for the motion in a second. The employment contract provides for a term of employment from July 1st, 2018 through June 30th, 2020. Contract provides for annual compensation of $199,722, along with health and welfare benefits and life insurance. Could I entertain a motion in a second, please? Motion by trustee Baxter, second by trustee Otto. Question, comments on item 6.2? Hearing none. Madam Secretary, please call the roll.
Virginia Baxter.
Aye.
Jeff Kellogg.
Aye.
Vivian Malauulu.
Aye.
Doug Otto.
Aye.
And Sunny Zia.
Aye. Congratulations.
Welcome, Mike.
Yeah, welcome.
Congratulations. 6.3, employment contract, Sylvia Lynch, Chief Information Technology Officer. This employment contract provides for a term of employment from July 1st, 2018 through June 30th, 2020. The contract provides for annual compensation of $178,076, along with health and welfare benefits and life insurance. Could I entertain a motion in a second, please? Motion by trustee Otto, second by trustee Malauulu. Questions, comments on this one for item 6.5, 6.3. Aye, sorry. Hearing none. Madam Secretary, please call the roll.
Virginia Baxter.
Aye.
Jeff Kellogg.
Aye.
Vivian Malauulu.
Aye.
Doug Otto.
Aye.
And Sunny Zia. Sunny Zia.
Aye.
Motion carries. Congratu, congratulations.
Yeah, I was trying to find her.
Congratulations, anyway. 6.4, this is the employment contract for Noel Correll, Dean, Counseling and Student Support Services.
He's here.
There you are. This is a employment contract, provides for a term of employment from July 1st, 2018 through June 30th, 2020. The contract provides for annual compensation of $158,705, along with health, welfare benefits, and life insurance. Could I entertain a motion in a second, please?
So moved.
Motion by trustee Malauulu, second by trustee Zia. Did you really want to get that one?
Yeah.
Okay. I'm working across the board. There's a motion in a second on the floor. Questions, comments, members of the board at this time? Hearing none. Madam Secretary, please call the roll.
Virginia Baxter.
Aye.
Jeff Kellogg.
Aye.
Vivian Malauulu.
Aye.
Doug Otto.
Aye.
And Sunny Zia.
Aye. Congratulations, Noel.
There we go. 6.5, employment contract, Ramon, Ramon Knox, this is Dean, Student Affairs. This is a employment contract, provides for a term of employment from July 1st, 2018 through June 30th, 2020. The contract provides for annual compensation of $149,595, along with the health and welfare benefits and life insurance. Could I entertain a motion on this item, please? Motion by trustee Zia, Vice President Zia, second by trustee Baxter. Questions, comments, members of the board at this time?
President Kellogg, I'd like to make a comment.
Chair recognizes student trustee.
I just want to make a quick comment regarding this employment contract for Dean Ramon Knox, or Dean Knox, as he liked to be called, there on campus. He's done an amazing job as a dean of student affairs this past year, whenever any student, not just ASV or student life in particular, but just in general, any student from the student population who has had a concern with anything around campus, his name has always been out there. And he's always there to help in any shape, any shape, way, or form. So, once again, we look forward to continuing to have him with us. Thank you again.
So, is he advising us to vote?
He can advise, but he got his drift, so. Madam Secretary, the roll on this item, please.
Virginia Baxter.
Aye.
Jeff Kellogg.
Aye.
Vivian Malauulu.
Aye.
Doug Otto.
Aye.
And Sunny Zia.
Aye.
Congratulations, Ramon. Next item, 6.6, employment contract, Misty Mays Trainer, Director, Operations Head Coach, Volleyball. This employment contract provides for a term of employment from July 1st, 2018 through June 30th, 2020. The contract provides for annual compensation of $105,086, along with health, welfare, and life insurance. Entertain a motion and approve.
So moved.
Motion by trustee Baxter, second by trustee Malauulu on this item. Questions, comments? None? Madam Secretary, please call the roll.
Virginia Baxter.
Aye.
Jeff Kellogg.
Aye.
Vivian Malauulu.
Aye.
Doug Otto.
Aye.
And Sunny Zia.
Aye.
Motion carries. Congratulations, Misty. They're in first place, by the way. They haven't, I don't think they've lost a game so far, or a match.[1677.45] I don't think they've lost a game so far, or a match. Next item, 6.7, employment contract. Brett Peabody, Director, Operations, Head Coach, Football. The employment contract provides for a term of employment through July 1st, 2018 through June 30th, 2020. The contract provides for annual compensation of $102,206, along with the health and welfare benefits and life insurance. Entertain a motion on this item, please? Chair recognizes trustee Otto, second by trustee Malauulu. Questions, comments, members of the board at this time? Hearing none. Madam Secretary, please call the roll on item 6.7.
Virginia Baxter.
Aye.
Jeff Kellogg.
Aye.
Vivian Malauulu.
Aye.
Doug Otto.
Aye.
And Sunny Zia.
Aye.
Congratulations. One of the best coaches in California.
And I would point out that our women's volleyball coach makes more than our football coach.
And I see that as a good thing.
You say it was a bad thing.
Yeah, but.
He's an Olympian after all.
Yeah. And Misty probably could get on a court and still be one of the best players with, carrying twins or no longer giving birth. Anyway, that's good. We're down with all of those. My thanks for everyone for having to read through it.
President Kellogg, I have to leave to go to an event at Lakewood. Lakewood celebrates, but I shall return. But, please excuse me.
And trustee Baxter, call us because this meeting, I don't think is going to go that much longer, but just call.
Well, then maybe I better take my stuff.
Please. I'm sorry. Trustee Malauulu, did you have a comment?
I think it's great, Jenny, that you are so active in Lakewood. I know that's in your district. I think it's great that you do that. I just want to make a comment to everyone whose contract was approved tonight, those that were new contracts and those that were extended. Just congratulations. We really appreciate all the work that you do. Welcome to the family. We look forward to what you bring to the table. And it was really nice to hear from our student trustee to speak in favor of one of our deans. I value student input and I think it's great to have that type of, where you free, you can feel free to voice that opinion here on the dais. I appreciate that. To everybody else, you know, if you're still here, keep up the great work. There was nothing negative to be said about extending some of these contracts, so good job. Thank you.
Thank you. Welcome to everyone. Mike, you'll find this college not as geographically challenging as your former place, Rio Hondo, which is like climbing Mount Everest sometimes. We're moving on to, this is now to Academic Senate, 7.1, new non-credit certificates. This is an action item. Student trustee, you will be participating in this, that the board approves the new non-credit certificates effective fall 2019 as submitted. Do we need, Madam?
So moved.
Do we need a report, or do we want to?
I just want to congratulate them because as we look at the enrollment management plan and as we look at the declining population that's coming from Long Beach Unified, it's really imperative to us to look to new populations and new ways to reach our underserved population. So I really want to commend President Ochoa and Vice President Scott on identifying these opportunities, as well as former curriculum chair and now dean, Kenneth Hillman. We're really excited about this opportunity.
And if I may, with the recommended item, let me first ask, I'll read this and I'll ask for the motion, and if you have anything to add. But it is, these certificates were created to meet Title V industrial requirements to respond to advisory committee recommendations and/or to facilitate transfer. The certificates were developed and approved by the respective college departments and schools. Documents have been reviewed by the Associate Degree General Educational Subcommittee and approved by the Committee on Curriculum and Instruction. So, at this time, I'll ask for a motion to approve. Motion by trustee Otto, second by trustee Zia. There's questions, comments? And I'll just, I'll recognize trustee Otto.
Yeah, it's a basic question about all of these, and that is that the new certificate programs that we have, new non-credit certificate programs are for computer hardware repair, Office Technologies, Microsoft Outlook, Office Technologies, Microsoft PowerPoint, home remodeling, and home remodeling. And, you know, some of this stuff used to be offered as credit courses, and we've moved them into non-credit. And can you explain that? I think I understand it, but I think it's important for people to understand what we're doing.
Well, many of these, thank you for the question, many of these courses are also credit courses, and we were creating a non-credit version. In some cases, because the non-credit tend to be lower-level courses, we've taken what could be, for example, Microsoft Excel, and separated it into beginning, intermediate, and advanced.
Great.
So people can take them one at a time and not have, you know, a 16-week course. These are designed to be short-term, to help people get into jobs more quickly.
Perfect.
That's the goal.
Great. Okay, thank you. It's helpful. Other questions, comments at this time? It does, once again, show the amount of work that goes into these steps. It's just, we read them here, but a lot of people put a lot of time and effort into it, so thank you. There is a motion in a second. If there's no other questions, comments, members of the board? Madam Secretary, please call the roll.
Virginia Baxter.
Oh, excuse me.
Jeff Kellogg.
Aye.
Vivian Malauulu.
Aye.
Doug Otto.
Aye.
Sunny Zia.
Aye.
And student trustee Chavez.
Aye.
Motion carries. Item 7.2, this is again, new, non-credit courses. It does require an action. This again, is through the non-credit courses effective fall 2019 as submitted. As I read previously, the same holds true in the process it went through. So could I entertain a motion in a second, please? Chair recognizes trustee Malauulu, second by trustee Zia. Question, comments, members of the board at this time? Hearing none. Madam Secretary, please call the roll on 7.2.
Jeff Kellogg.
Aye.
Vivian Malauulu.
Aye.
Doug Otto.
Aye.
Sunny Zia.
Aye.
And student trustee Chavez.
Aye.
Motion carries. 7.3, these next following items, 7.3, 7.4, 7.5, are informational only. So we'll begin with 7.4. This is Revised Administrative Regulation 4025, Academic and Progress Probation and Dismissal. This is an informational item, so I will turn to Superintendent President Romelli. Do we want to have anything on this one? Or is this just, in accordance with established practices?
I don't have anything to add, other than that they're informational.
So there's nothing to be, unless members of the board at this time, could I entertain a motion to approve this item? I'm sorry. It's informational. Never mind. Questions, comments, members of the board? None?
Nope. Yes, there is.
Trustee Otto.
We're changing a little bit how people proceed through problems, put on probation, dismissal, and whatnot. I'm wondering what the impetus for this is. Again, I think I understand, but Dr. Scott, if you or our academic senate president want to respond? Yep, please.
Jeff, Kathy?
Some of these changes were just meant to clean up the language or to make us current with Title V regulations. They did go through the senate. I don't know if President Ochoa wants to add anything further to them.
So, they follow the process. So these are under the Curriculum and Committee. So, our policy and standards revised them. They went through all the channels, and then they were approved by the Curriculum and Committee and they were brought up to you. So like Dr. Scott said, there's just a lot of the cleanup with the language. Sometimes the state will change some of the regulations that we have to catch up with it. So, the senate is looking at revising and correcting a lot of those regulations, so there will be more coming to you later on.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Other questions, comments, members of the board at this time? Hearing none. We'll move to the next item, which is 7.4. Again, this is Revised Administrative Regulation, same scenario, informational item only. Members of the board, any questions on this item at this time? Hearing none. We'll move on to item 7.5, Revised Administrative Regulation 4026, Academic Renewal. Same scenario. The changes to the administrative regulations are being recommended to align with current regional practices. Questions, comments on this particular informational item? Hearing none. We'll move from 7.5 to reports. 8.1, Academic Senate President.
Thank you, President Kellogg. I have a few items that I want to bring. The first, I want to congratulate Jerry Florence and Shana Hagman for carrying out a great, great faculty Flex Day. So on March 15, we had several wonderful speakers that came to the college and addressed and gave the faculty tools for addressing equity and bridging some of the gaps with some of our disproportionate student population. So Jerry Florence wanted me to hand each of the board members the program, which you can find the information of the speakers that were present at our Flex Day activity. I also want to let the board know that on March 23, the Academic Senate passed and approved for me to sign the Guided Pathways Work Plan, which is due by the end of the month to the state. And shortly after we dismissed the meeting, the senate engaged in their retreat. For their retreat, we invited administrators, we invited counselors, we had some of the classified staff, and the topic was guided pathways. We had guest Michel Pelati from Rio Hondo College and Randy Beach from Southwestern College. Both of them worked with the Guided Pathways Plan with the state academic senate. So they brought a lot of wealth of knowledge and they provided a lot of information and allowed for some of the faculty to express perhaps concerns or just clarifying some concerns or questions that they might have regarding the guided pathways. So we are definitely moving forward with that. Regarding the Pacific Coast campus, I want to mention that the Automotive Club is having or celebrating Kamai or Cambodian New Year. That's going to be on Saturday, April 14, and they would like to extend an invitation to the board of trustees and, of course, all the administrators. And the best news is that the Long Beach City College Horticulture is bringing back their open house. So this is a save the date, May 11 and the 12. I know the foundation always wants a date because they want to invite all the foundation to come and take part in that. So with that, thank you.
Thank you. Next is the Classified Senate President.
I don't have anything to add this time. Thanks.
That's easy. Superintendent President?
Yes. Thank you. Most of my reports surrounded the funding formula, so I'll just add a few more things. I want to congratulate the team that's working on a new welcome center. This was envisioned by our counseling team under the leadership of Noel Correll. We're going to, we still have a lot of work to be done on it, but we're going to have a soft opening for summer enrollment peak period with a hard opening for fall peak enrollment period, so congratulations. Also want to congratulate our counselors who envisioned outreach to high school, and that is in its final planning phases, and a lot is actually taking place already, but it's continuing to expand as they continue to talk. That's going to be a critical component in our enrollment management plan. Also, many of you have heard of Starfish Early Alert. It was piloted with nine faculty very successfully. It then rolled out to 18 faculty, which early reports are saying continued success. It is a key element in a retention strategy. I have used it very successfully before. It will have a full faculty rollout. My understanding is for fall 18, so I'm very excited about that, and I know the counselors are excited about that. We have written for a state chancellor's office innovation grant, which funds anywhere from $1 to $4 million. Ours is particularly focused on a data sharing agreement with the Cal States. One of those, one of the exciting things in the grant would be to data share for reverse transfer. So once our students transfer to Cal State Long Beach, can they obtain a degree from Long Beach City College at the same time while they're working on that Cal State degree? So that would be something very exciting. We have also applied to be a part of the IEPI, which is that State Enrollment Management Team, part of their Strategic Enrollment Management Academy, which is, what it does is it takes specific elements of our enrollment plan and it takes an even deeper dive and allows us to go to conferences and get education. We would like to look at scheduling and how do we schedule most efficiently? So that's what we've written in there, and we're hoping to have our fingers crossed and win that award. And that will complete my report.
Thank you. Student trustee.
Good evening, everyone. So throughout this month, I began by meeting with trustee Malauulu regarding one of the really important issues here at Long Beach City College, which is the smoking initiative. And the Associated Student Body has been working really hard regarding, addressing this. It's something that's been brought up in previous years, but this student government, this ASB really wants to tackle it this semester before it ends. So, as the president mentioned and he emphasized, that we've been collecting data and we've been collecting surveys regarding what the ultimate student population want. So far, the data that we've been gathering seems to be coming, and as he mentioned, hopefully by the next two meetings, hopefully, in the next meeting of April, we have a presentation ready and maybe a resolution even. In addition, in the previous meeting, I mentioned that the progress that I have myself had done with surveys, collecting surveys for the ASB Viking Food Court, and the issues that students were raising and along with their concerns about how the food and the pricing and whatnot. I said that I was going to be meeting with SMB Foods' Dave, the specialist, and luckily we have that meeting coming up this Friday, along with the ASB president, who will be joining me on this. Furthermore, on a side note, this is my 10th meeting here with the board of trustees, which means that I only have two more left. I emphasize this because a new student trustee will be coming in by, for the month of June. I do hope to be working alongside whoever it's going to be to try to explain to them the process to be in this position, because I know my predecessor, Alejandro Romelli, definitely did an amazing job by training me and preparing me. Even if I didn't necessarily was in presence, he told me to at least look at the videos and everything's on YouTube, and just to see the procedure for how the process to be in the student trustee position. On the bright side, I am graduating this semester, and so far, thank you, so far, I have received some college acceptances already. I got accepted to Cal State LA and I got into the UCI honors program as well, but I'm just waiting on USC and UCLA as well. I'm waiting for USC and UCLA. So I got accepted to Cal State LA and UCI, so I'm happy with that. Aside from that, thank you so much. So with that, I conclude my report. Thanks.
Thank you. Congratulations, too. Board of trustees will be on the, with trustee Otto, Malauulu, Zia, then I'll finish up. Trustee Otto?
Really, we've been very busy worrying about this funding formula issue, which is one of the biggest things to come at community colleges since I've been on this board for 14 years now. And I think, I can't say I'm cautiously optimistic, but I think that we're in for a good fight because the right's on our side here, and we need to figure out a way to work it out. We're, nobody cared 14 years ago, or five years ago even, very much about equity, and it's become so central to what it is that we do. We're not just about access, we're about success and how to make all of that work at the same time that the legislature for the whole time has been worried about accountability, and that ship has finally arrived. And it's, we're going to have to do something about it, and, and by the way, we've been doing things about it, but it's an agenda item, both at the state and at the federal level, that they expect, for example, Washington State, Ohio, Tennessee, and completion seems to be the way it is, and we need to improve our completion numbers, and we know that, and we're working on that. So, I guess all I would say is that we'll continue to do this on almost a daily basis to get our voices heard about the effects on the college if we're unable to push back on the funding formula as it currently exists, and I'd leave it at that.
Trustee Malauulu.
Okay, so, the day after our last meeting on February 27 was kind of a marathon day with events at which I represented the college, and I was really sick that week. I don't know if you guys remember, but on the 28th, we, several of us were at the CCEJ Interfaith Breakfast in the morning. A couple of us attended the Chamber Lunch, which dealt with port security. And then that evening, we were at the Goodwill Dinner, the Power of Work Dinner, and I was And then that evening, we were at the Goodwill Dinner, the Power of Work Dinner, and I was really pleased to have been able to make all three events. I didn't think I was going to make it, but somehow was able to make those, plus the ones in between that day, and to see that those events included some of our own LBCC fingerprints. We had students there, we had faculty there, and I just love that we have such an active college within the community. And I love that we have a seat at that table, no matter what that table is, whether it's, you know, literally a breakfast, lunch, and dinner table, or figuratively with business and port and security. It's just wonderful that we have such an active college. On March 1, I attended the People State of the City event, which was, again, lots of our students were there. I don't really know the extent of their participation in the event. I'm not really sure. I would like to know, so if anyone is aware, please send me an email. But I'd like to know what role our students played in the People State of the City, if it was a club, if it was an organization, because I saw a lot of our students there. On March 8, we had the groundbreaking for Building J, which is near and dear to my heart because it's the auditorium, the theater arts, performing arts. Also, I took advantage of being on campus that day, and I attended the last day of the art exhibit, Plumline, which was really neat. It was jewelry made by our students. It was very interesting to see the materials that were used for some of these exhibits. So even though the exhibit has closed, you can see the images online, and you can, if you're interested in seeing that, I recommend it. On March 12, trustee Baxter and I, along with Josh Castellanos, made the trek out to downtown LA. The LA County Commission on Women hosted the Women of the Year event, and it was great. Again, it was also nice to see Long Beach present there. And then on March 13, we had our board retreat, which was, you know, the best one for me. I don't have a long history as a trustee, but it was the best one that I've had. I think since I've been here, we've had three or four, maybe? And it was the best retreat. Dr. Helen Benjamin did an outstanding job. We were able to really focus in on some of the needs of the board, and we still have a lot of work that needs to be done, but I think we made progress based on that retreat. March 15, I was on campus for Flex Day, had a couple of meetings. One of them was Dr. Romali. And the only item that I regret not being able to attend, I had RSVP'd for the active shooter. And with my schedule, I was trying to get to the PCC campus, but just a word that, you know, we live in a day where we have to have active shooter training. So enough said on that. I'm glad that we're making it available, but I wish we didn't. On March 22, we were in the pouring rain at MOLA for the College Promise 10th Anniversary, which was very well-attended. I was impressed that so many people were there, considering how hard it rained all morning. We swam to our cars. But there were a ton of people there, and it was great to see that event 10 years in the making and to see everybody there celebrate it. On Friday, March 23, I had a meeting with the executive director of the Kamai Parent Association, Chan Hopson. My district is home to the largest Cambodian student population at LBCC, and I've been trying to identify ways that the college could be more supportive of the community, especially because a language is a factor, and many of these students are here through their family's political asylum. So my meeting with KPA, we actually found ways to support our students with scholarships. They do offer scholarships for high school students, so we're trying to implement something to support our college students. So there will be more on that as we work through that. And then the next day, this past Saturday, my family and I participated in the March for Our Lives. I know Javier just walked out, but I saw him as I was leaving. We were honking the horn, trying to get his attention. Again, I know that a lot of our faculty, staff, and students were there that day, and that makes me very, very proud. That was a 100% student-run event, and that our college community supported it. It was great. And I would like to just close, following up what our student trustee talked about with the smoking initiative on campus. My favorite part of that is the fact that the students developed a survey that went out to all of the students to get input from them. So I look forward to reading the results of those surveys to see where the college campus stands on smoking. It's not a decision that we could just make unilaterally. It's something that every stakeholder has to be able to provide input for, and it's, you know, we do have smoking sections on campus, and I know that the Viking newspaper has reported on this before. So I'm really curious to see what the pulse is for that initiative. So good job with the smoking situation on campus. Hopefully, we'll have something within the next two meetings before your last meeting. We could bring something to make a decision on. Thank you, and that's it. Everybody have an awesome spring break. Enjoy it, you know, take some time to relax and regroup, and see you guys next month.
Vice President Zia.
Thank you, President Kellogg. I am not going to report on all the events I attended or the board retreat. It's already been covered. I just wanted to mention, as an effort in our advocacy role, I have been reaching out to downtown residents, my district, for them to learn about our community college district, how to get involved, advocating for more enrollment, and also the many great things we offer, whether it's through our workforce development, our career technical education. There's still a lot of questions and myths about what we offer, what happened, and just the amazing work that our staff and our superintendent president and our students are up to. I had that presentation yesterday. I want to especially thank Dr. Romali, and a very special thank you to Joshua Castellanos, who was there being my helper and really had brochures, was very prepared. It was a call to action. People had feedback forums and also could learn how to get involved. Hopefully, this will help with our enrollment. Hopefully, there will be more interest. I can tell you that they were very blown away. We showed the video that the great staff of ours have put together, and it really made a tremendous difference. And this is the Ocean Residence Community Association, so they're not easily impressed. I just wanted to thank everyone for their support and for the tremendous work that they're doing. It's definitely catching the eye of many, and hopefully, we can advocate for more. Thank you. That's all I have.
Thank you. Next item is the trustee committees. We have nothing to report out at this time. On 8.6, we then move to the trustee requests of the superintendent president for future agenda items and/or reports. We do have, in item 9.1, we do have scheduled reports upcoming. There's the strategic plan, strategic plan reports from teams 2 through 12. We present it monthly, starting in April 18 through November 2019. Something we do for accreditation as well as information. And then the trustee request, after our board retreat last month, we schedule a board retreat for August or September 2018. That was a trustee request. So we put it on the reports now for items that we want to look for in the future. That is it. Next item, 10, report from bargaining association. So total of five minutes for anyone that wishes to speak on that one. Please come forward.
Good evening, Shanae Hunt, Faculty Association President. Good evening, board, President Romali, vice presidents, faculty, staff, students, and community members in attendance. I'll be brief here. I led a panel discussion, a We the People panel discussion today. We the People is a series that's supported by the Social Sciences Division, and we had a panel discussion today called Resistance Social Movements. It was amazing. Here are seven individuals from the community speaking about what they're doing outside in their movements. We will have another We the People panel discussion on May 8, and that will be, I think the topic is on the 1968 blowouts or student walkouts from the East LA high schools. And it will also be a music and art representation, so to come. I also want to mention that on Friday, April 20, the Rep Council is going to be featuring, I think Brendan Hayes, to speak about campus safety. He's going to be giving a presentation to the faculty, and it's also the National Gun Violence Action, they are Action Against Gun Violence, so we are honoring that with a safety presentation. And then I just want to say thank you to Dr. Romali's leadership. You have consistently shown your interest in engaging the campus community and communicating with us and just providing us leadership moving forward wherever we are going. Thank you for that. So that's it. Thank you.
Thank you. Others on this item? Then we're moving to the, to the non-agenda items. We have one speaker, Cynthia Quintero, and this is on the Foreign Language Film Festival. Welcome.
Thank you very much. Good evening, Superintendent President, Dr. Romali, President Kellogg, members of the Board of Trustees, faculty, staff, and students, and members of the community. My name is Cynthia Quintero. I'm a professor of Spanish here in the Foreign Language Department and the current department chair. I'm here to cordially invite you to our event. You should have the flyer in your packets. Looks something like this, rather colorful. And pretty much, just to give you a little bit of information or background, this is the second Foreign Language Film Festival that we will be hosting here at Long Beach City College. We had quite a successful event last year, and this year, the event will actually kick off with a lecture by Gregorio Luke on April 19, which is a Thursday. The theme of this festival is LGBTQ in foreign language films. And you will notice here that we are starting after the lecture, the week after, we will have one film every Friday night, pretty much beginning April 27, beginning at 6:00 PM, and we will then have a Q and A upon conclusion of the film. So we are just very, very grateful that we have received a lot of support, not only from local community members, but from faculty and staff here at Long Beach City College, and also from Dr. Romali. We appreciate your support. We've reached out to the LGBTQ Center in Long Beach to project Aloha, and we are also having two local Cal State faculty come and present and lead the Q and As. So we are very, very fortunate to have this broad support. The event will end on Friday, May 19, with a live mariachi performance. So we will actually have a live mariachi beginning at 3:00 PM, and then we will have the screening of Chabela. I really hope that you can make it. I assure you that you are in for a surprise. Thank you very much. And to the student trustee, I think I heard you say that you are accepted to UC Irvine. I'm an alumni, so anything you need, don't hesitate to contact me. Thank you.
Appreciate it. Thank you. Thank you. No other speakers for non-agenda items. There is no need for a second closed session, so at this time, we'll adjourn to our meeting of April 24, 2018. Without objection, the meeting of the board of trustees is adjourned. Thank you. Good night.